July 12th, 2023 City Council Meeting. We will begin with the invocation followed by the pledge. If you'll please stand.
Dear heavenly Father, I just thank you for today. I thank you for summer. I thank you for kids being out of school and summer camps and swimming and just having a good time. Just thank you for this city. Thank you for the citizens. Thank you for our first responders, just as you keep us all safe. Just thank you for this council and ask that you give us the wisdom to make wise and smart decisions. All this in your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with the minutes from June 14th, 2023.
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Zinn, second by who did that? Who did the second?
Brother Curtis.
Second by McGee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, one. Heather Cowan.
Good morning, Mayor Council. First item is a adjustment to the terms of the tax incrementary investment zone board number four appointment. So back in May, we updated the listing of the representatives on the board. But today, we're just going to update the terms. And so position one, which is the mayor, that is appointed annually. The other terms are for two years. And so as you can see here, the odd, the odd number of positions, one, three, five, seven, and nine are being updated to expire in 2025. And so with that, it's recommended that the city council approve the amendment to the terms of the term.
Any questions for Kyle?
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kyle. Oh, two. Cameron.
Good morning, Mayor Council. Cameron Williams, Traffic Control here for the city of Tyler. So we have a couple of different, two ordinance items. The first one here is on speed limit amendments. So this is just a real quick, these amendments really cover a couple of different things. So there is actually a change in the ordinance for Old Bullard Road from Amherst Street to Old Jacksonville Highway. And the rest of this is just really cleanup. The last time that there were any ordinance changes to this section of our code was 2017. So we tried to go through, do some cleanup to look at segments of roadway that are no longer present in the road, in the city, modifications to some names, just some cleanup on some discrepancies. And then there are some existing streets that were never put into our code. And so I'll give you a brief overview of that real quick. So here's the list of the streets that have changes. Old Bullard Road, we'll talk about that one specifically because that's the only one where we're doing a change and we're actually reducing the speed limit on that roadway. The rest of these are clarifying limits, descriptions. West Cumberland Road, for example, at the bottom, that was constructed by the city and it's been posted out there at 40 miles per hour, but has never, 40 and 45, but has never been put in our ordinance system. And just as kind of a reference, by default, every street in the city is 30 miles per hour unless we set an ordinance to change it higher than that. And so that does kind of give you a little context. To talk specifically about Old Bullard Road, so this came as a request from some of the residents along Old Bullard Road. We're looking at really Amherst Street up to Old Jacksonville Highway is the limits. So it is a, the speed limit varies from 35 to 40 miles per hour in this area. It is a collector, so you do anticipate it's going to carry a little bit more traffic. The whole idea of collector is you're funneling traffic from residential neighborhood streets and getting them up to like a bigger roadway. It is a wider street, 36 feet face to face. It is, but all the zoning along it is residential. So you've got houses that front. There's sidewalk, various throughout there. There's actually not a whole lot of sidewalk. We did some traffic counts and so you see there about 2,700 vehicles per day, but there is a lot of driveway density as far as residential driveway. Not a whole lot of crash history in that area, but again, the idea of residential uses and the driveway density is kind of what led to some of our recommendations here. So we did a lot of, this is just a lot of data as far as speed that we collected to look at what's going on out there today. Don't want to spend a whole lot of time there, but ultimately, our recommendation because of the lack of sidewalks, the residential nature of the street and the driveway density to lower that to 30 miles per hour. And I will kind of pause and say historically, the engineering approach has been to use what we call the 85th percentile. And that 85th percentile says when people are driving free flow, they don't have anybody around them, they feel what's a safe speed, 85% of the people will drive at that speed or lower. Now, that creates problems in your residential areas. There's more of a safety concern that we need to take into consideration with the land uses. So this is really a different approach, first time that we're using this criteria to look at setting our speed limits that really addresses citizens' concerns and the safety on how those are being used. So with that, it is recommended the city council adopt an ordinance amending city code chapter 17 by adding, modifying, or removing speed limits for East Irwin Street, FM 2767, Loop 323, North Church Avenue, Old Bullard Road, Palace Avenue, Pleasant Retreat Road, Skidmore Lane, South Vine Avenue, State Highway 155, US 271, and West Cumberland Road.
Any questions for Cameron?
Cameron, I just want to say thank you for your work on this project. I know it's been in the works for a while, so thank you for your patience and bearing with us on getting this done. Just for reference, in case people go back and look at the ordinance and coincide with what you said earlier, I noticed in the ordinance that from Amherst North, there was no mention of the change, and that's because the default is 30. So that's why there wasn't a red line change for that. So if anybody goes back and looks at the ordinance changes, that's why, correct?
Correct. So when you look at the actual language of the ordinance, so we are actually striking out Old Bullard Road from our ordinance list from Amherst Street up to Old Jacksonville because that then becomes a default of 30 miles per hour.
Correct. Well, again, thank you for your work on this. I appreciate it.
Cameron, on the 85th percentile, is the thinking here that lowering the speed limit's going to also lower the 85th percentile?
That is a great question. Honestly, probably not. There will be a percentage of the population who see that speed limit sign at 30 miles per hour, and they are going to obey that and they're going to observe that. And so you, I think you will see a drop in some of that free flow speed. There are others that are going to drive the speed that they feel comfortable. Old Bullard Road is 36 foot wide. There's not a whole lot of parking that occurs on that.
Right.
So really, this is a first step. Back last fall, we instituted our traffic calming policy, or you think of it as speed management policy. One of the criteria that we put in there is we will only look at a street if it's 30 miles per hour posted. If it's 35 or higher, we won't look at applying any of those techniques for reducing speed. And so in this case, this is kind of the first step. If, say, we implement this, which we will, assuming that it passes, go back out there and re-study if that 85th percentile is 36 or 40 miles per hour, then how can we apply some of those traffic calming techniques to then lower the speed? Because in my opinion, those more geometric approaches or striping changes to help narrow, make that road feel more narrow will then start people impacting how they drive.
And put it out there, I know you're not responsible for enforcement, but what does the city do? You know, it's been 35 in a large section for a long time, it's going to 30 for the citizens to know. You know, I hate for somebody to go out day one and go, I mean, when did that change? Today.
So we will change the signage, get that posted, and probably likely will add some orange flags or something to that to make it a little bit more visible. And I'll probably speak for the police department, but I, and they can probably speak for themselves. But typically, I've seen anytime you change a ordinance, they usually do some type of soft gray period. They do some warnings before they actually start doing ticketing of any sign.
Thank you, Cameron. Cameron, I see the majority of that traffic in the morning. It's a cut through, people getting off Broadway, going to school, going to work, and then in the afternoons. During the day, I don't see it now. I drive it some during the day, but I think it will help, but you know, human nature's human nature.
Correct. And again, that's where we've really, we put together that traffic calling policy so that it's a slow process and it's step by step, but I think those are the things that we can look in the future. How can we start putting physical things that help change those behaviors?
Any other questions for Cameron?
No other questions? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I don't have any cards. We do have one resident that lives on Old Bullard Road. Do you want to speak or? You don't have to. But if you do, you got to come out. You don't have to. Okay, we're good.
I move to approve then. No other questions.
Got a motion by Haney, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, three.
So oh, three. So this is also a part of our chapter 17, but it deals with school zones. So again, kind of a safety as a theme here, how can we improve that? So this is a request to amend school zones. So some goals here is we want to improve safety for our school pedestrians and to create more uniformity and consistency across our school zones throughout the city of Tyler. So these are just some graphics that kind of show, you know, at different speeds where you have a pedestrian and vehicle crash, what the severity of that is. And so at 20 miles per hour, that is much less. As you start moving that up, especially to get into the high 30s, the 40s, the possibility of fatality increases significantly. And so this was kind of one of the safety considerations that we took into effect. So here are just some statistics. So of our school zones that are within the city of Tyler, there are, the majority of them are on city streets. There are 10 of them that are on tech dot streets that are within the city of Tyler. And so that, that makes a difference on what, what we can do and how we maybe look at those school zones and those speeds. These are your tech stop maintained streets, just to kind of give you a breakdown of what those are posted at for those schools time periods. And then for our city streets, this will show you kind of what is there today versus what we're being proposed. And so this moves us from basically about 60% of our school zones being 20 miles per hour to almost 97% of our school zones being 20 miles per hour. And so that gives us a lot more consistency of people when they're going into a school zone, they're going to know it's 20 as opposed as it 25 or 30. And also from an enforcement standpoint for our, for our police department. I'll talk about some of these specifically, but again, for tech stop, we're roadways, we are not recommending any changes just because there's some additional steps that we want to go through. And also they stick very strictly to this. They will not do a speed differential of more than 15 miles per hour. So say if you've got a 45 mile per hour road, they will only go down to 30. They would not jump down to 25 or 20. And that's just kind of their policy and how they approach it. We, as you'll see, we actually have some streets where we're going to jump 20 miles per hour, and there's one that's 25. But you see that throughout other cities that are compared, that they use 20 as kind of their standard for school zones. So this gets us more in line with that approach. So here's kind of some criteria that we put together to kind of help scan and guide us in these recommendations. And as a double checking thing, we do have one that we are recommending that does have a 25 mile per hour speed differential. But other than that, 20 miles per hour is the max that we might jump. And I'll speak specifically to those shortly. These are the three locations that are city streets that will not have a 20 mile per hour speed limit. West Cumberland Road, that's a higher speed roadway, 45 miles per hour, higher traffic volume. Where the kids cross, it's at a signalized intersection at Blue Mountain, and so that's why we did not drop that one. Cumberland Academy on Roy Road, there are no pedestrians that are out there present today, so there didn't seem to be a need at this time. And then Tyler High School, that's kind of an anomaly. Really, the only reason why we have that line lane at 35 is because it enters a 35 mile per hour school zone on the loop. And so that's just kind of to provide some notification as people coming off a line that you're entering that 35. So those are really the three outliers. These are the locations where we have 40 miles per hour and we're dropping down to 20. But in all these locations, we have school zone beacons. Those are the flashing yellow beacons. So that makes it much more obvious that there's a change in the speed. A lot of our other school zones are what we call static signs. Those are just have no beacon that it says from this time to this time is a school zone. So that was one of our criteria, that if we're going to drop from say 40 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour, we wanted to give more indication of that change so that people are aware of that. The one outlier that I wanted to point out, so Bolter Middle School or Garden Valley Road, that is posted at 45 and we will be dropping that to 20 during school time, but there is a crosswalk there within that zone where your middle school students are crossing. And so from a safety perspective, again, 20 miles per hour is much more desired. So with that, it is recommended that city council consider adopting an ordinance amending Tyler City Code chapter 17 by modifying school speed zones for Andy Woods Elementary, Bolter Middle School, Caldwell Elementary, Cumberland Academy, Griffin Elementary, Hubbard Middle School, Jackson Elementary, Moore Middle School, Ramey Elementary, Rice Elementary, Tyler Legacy High School, and UT Tyler University Academy, and removing school zones for Clarkston Elementary.
Any questions for Cameron?
Cameron, will all this be done prior to the start of school in August?
Yes, sir. That will be the intent. So our traffic sign shop typically goes out and starts doing a maintenance of all those school zone signs this time of year. And for these, basically, we've already, we'll print up a 20 mile per hour plaque that will just go over that portion of the sign. So it's not a complete rework and replacement of the sign, almost just like a patch.
Anyone else?
Move to approve oh, three.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Cameron. Darren.
Getting there slowly. All right, good morning.
Morning.
As y'all remember, last time we came with an ordinance revision for right of way use and construction. And now what we're wanting to do is we received some direction from y'all, some revisions and additions y'all would like to see in it. So we went literally line by line, engineering, legal, IT, went line by line. And here's what, I want to just go over some things here that what was included in the previous and then just kind of highlights and then what we, the proposed revisions that we are bringing today, we're wanting your approval for. Basically, what we had for, just generally, for the previously approved, that a permit is required. We actually had one utility contractor company say, we don't have to have a permit. Well, yes, you do. We have to know you're here. They do have the right to be in there, but we have the right to regulate them in there. So we just had to set them on the right path, shall we say. So we have, we did establish a small permit fees that will help recover just at least a little bit of the, of the, our administrative costs. We have the revocation of the suspension of a permit. We gave us that capability. Now, that's only going to happen when there's a breach of the terms or conditions of the permit or the right of way user has a history of violation of city ordinances, standards, or egregious safety violations. So responsibility of the permit holder, basically, they must keep the construction site clean and free of litter and no truck vehicles on the streets. That would just tear up our asphalt streets quite, quite a bit, but we really have to have and just say that specifically. So also, we included a one-year warranty in there. They have to have a one-year warranty and they have to come within 14 days after we notify them to repair, making repairs during that one-year warranty. And last on the one that was previous, they must submit a barricade plan and they must submit a traffic control plan if they do plan on shutting a lane, shutting down a lane of traffic. So those are just some of the previously approved last time. Here, I want to go ahead and get into the proposed revisions. We did do some grammar formatting, table of contents, and added some definitions, just some standard changes there. But we also did facility abandon and removal. We had 30 days in there to remove like power poles and things like that that are, that are a safety hazard or just sitting there. We have two poles in it right next to each other. We did give them 60 days after talking with Encore, saying that's a more reasonable timeframe for them. And as far as relocation, 15 dash 277 relocation of facilities, when we have our CIP project, we notify them that we need them to move. They have 60 days to move their, their facilities outside of the right of way into the new right of way, outside of our pavement. So certain underground requirements, 15 dash 283 for safe and accessible path. Basically, what this is, is it cannot, anything they put in there in the right of way cannot interfere with pedestrian safety, the pathway. It cannot interfere with vehicular traffic, meaning sight distance for triangular sight distance for the vehicular path. And part of this, one of the directions we were given is, is underground versus above ground. Now, certain things can go underground, and I want to go ahead and show you this slide right here and move over to this one. There are certain things that, that facilities can have underground and some that can have up ground, above ground. Now, you'll see on the top left, those pedestals, which have caused a lot of heartburn, those can go underground. And that middle picture on the top is what it would look like if those go underground. Basically, they just take that and turn it sideways and put it underground. The markers on the far right, they call them matchsticks, those are ID markers. And what they do is they will take that cone off right there and they will tie to it. And that is what is, tells them exactly, they tie electrical charge there, and that tells them where their line is in there. But they can be moved underground also.
They can?
They can be moved underground. So now as far as the bottom row, the cabinets, I'm going to add transformers to that also. Those cannot be above, below ground. Those have to be underground. Those are just similar, those are similar in size to our traffic control box cabinets. Those cannot be moved underground, but those cannot be, those are either outside the right of way or located in the right of way where it's not to interfere with even future extensions, including master street plan with YD and all that. They have to take that into account when locating these. So those cannot go underground. Same with, now, in talking with Encore, their easements, they actually put transformers and they're, they have little handhold boxes, kind of like those pedestals, but those are typically outside of our right of way on by the property. So we would not be regulating those.
So does anyone have to get with you guys regarding these above-ground cabinets so that they don't go into a residential neighborhood in front of a house?
These may, these, these are typically located at corners, major, major intersection, major interceptors, major intersections.
Darren, when you're asking that, are you talking about the, to use kind of the references here, the above-ground pedestal type stuff or the active cabinets?
The bottom left picture.
Okay. So the active cabinet?
And just for information, active cabinet means it actually has a, a light emitter in there who actually creates the light for the fiber, or the passive cabinet does not, just for, if you're interested. So, but no, those are typically not in residential. They could be at the edge of residential. They may be, that is, it is a possibility.
Are those put outside of the right of way? Is that right, Darren? You said on the active cabinets?
The active cabinets may or may not, but they will not be violating any issues or having any issues with right of way or distance for vehicular or pedestrian travel. Next, we have repair utilities. If they damage utility, require them to tell us within one hour. They've been good about that for the most part, but they will be, it is required now, it is in the ordinance, and they must repair it within 24 hours. So period. Restoration of the right of way must be in original or better condition, which includes a right of way, city owned easements, or even pathways to city owned easements. If they have to cross private property to get it to an easement, sometimes they have to, if it's in backyard or whatever. So we actually included the pathway to easement in there. So they must restore that. And then there's wireless network nodes. That's just, it's a little bit different, more like a SCADA system for, for operation of water utilities or other type of utilities. Those cannot, we have similar requirements for those also that we included in there. Y'all have, y'all have any other questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'll say, based on what's all transpired over the last six months or longer, this is very much needed. And, you know, we have not had anything with teeth to enforce some of the, I don't want to call it behavior, but actions of some, some folks. And I think this will actually, this is something we need to do to protect the citizens and it's probably long overdue.
I feel really good about this. Engineering, legal, feel really good about this ordinance with the latest changes. We're very comfortable and very satisfied for that reason.
Darren, two, two questions. One, how are you going to get the information to the contractors that are working in our easement? Question one. And then two, due to now the change in the ordinance, is that going to require the above-ground pedestals to change to underground handles?
Anything that is installed, anything that is above ground right now will typically, like, like in north or even area, any area that has above-ground facilities, we do not require, if they ever go in there and work on it or anything like that, we do not require them to go below ground. If it's existing above ground, it will stay existing above ground. So only new stuff will be, we, does this cover.
Okay. And then info to the contractor so they understand how the rules have changed and what they need to do.
We will be, we will be notifying them of the notice, notifying them of the ordinance change.
Darren, we set, first of all, good job in doing all this. Appreciate you coming back and making these changes too. We've set the default now to surface mounted junction boxes. For somebody, for some reason, in their yard saw them out there doing that and said, no, I don't want that big surface mounted square in my yard, like you said, somebody had mentioned. I, I do want the pedestal. That is still an option to somebody. They could get that done, couldn't they?
They can do that because it's actually cheaper than pedestal, isn't it?
Yeah, the vendor would rather do it.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, just want to make that clear that you don't have to have the surface mounted.
You can give them that option. Now, they may, you would rather have the
A little bitty tower.
A little bit tower rather than a two by three box.
Yep.
I've actually seen some green tinted boxes also rather than a tan. Sometimes that helps.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? I don't have any cards on this item. The only person I see out there in the audience that could be affected by this is Tom with Encore. I mean, if you want to come up and speak, feel free to, you don't have to.
I'll say something.
Come on up. Just state your name and address for the record. We know where you are.
Tom Trimple, Encore Electric Delivery. I'm the region manager. 1300 South Southeast Loop, 323 Tyler, Texas, 75, 701. No, and, and everything seems very, you know, we've got a franchise with the city and I've talked to Darren and they've said, you know, our franchise is, you know, we signed it, what, two or three years ago? So that's, that's set in place. A lot of this is covered under our franchise. We've had a great working relationship with the city, with the council, with Darren's office, with everybody here. And, and so we, we're, we're fully on board to helping in any way that we can. We've, we've looked at a couple of, couple of things and we're going to work with Darren to try to make sure that this goes smoothly on our side as well because some of this stuff helps us out and allows us after storms to get some stuff cleaned up. What we're more worried about than anything, just like y'all, is our customers out there is, you know, making sure the city of Tyler is, is well represented by Encore because, you know, people drive around and they look at things and, and, you know, we have two poles sitting in a location. We want to get that cleaned up as well. So, so we would like to, you know, there, there's a lot of things in here that are great. We're, we're going to work with them on, on a few other things and he's, we, we talked to We're, we're going to work with them on a few other things, and he's, we talked extensively yesterday about, about some of the issues, and so we, I, it's a, it's a good program.
Okay. Thanks for your attitude.
Thank you.
Like working with you.
I think if we had the definition of partner with the city of Tyler, we would put his picture next to him. As far as our city partners go, Tom, you do a great job. Thanks.
Thank you all for what you all do for us.
Thanks, Tom.
Move to approve oh four.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M one.
Mayor and council, this is a request to authorize city manager to execute a construction contract with Strapping Technologies for installation of traffic signal at various locations. So real quick, just cover, just again, the locations and the history as a reminder. So the first one is a new traffic signal at Grande Boulevard and Old Noonday Road. So this is between Old Jacksonville and Frankston Highway. This is a, you know, location that has an existing caution flashing yellow light for Grande. There are sight distance constraints there, the geometry of its intersection, and you see continued increase in traffic volume and development in that area. And the second location is the reconstruction of an existing signal at West Gentry Parkway and Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. So as a reminder, at this location, this was, as we were doing a lot of our preventive maintenance, we identified rust holes in the mast arms, concerns about, hey, we need to get this replaced. And so that's what has brought this one to the forefront to get this reconstructed. And so we went out to bid for this. The base bid is basically the, the construction or reconstruction of these two intersections. We also did three alternates. Is that this, and that really speaks to the West Gentry and West Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard location, is we want to deploy portable traffic signals. We want to get those mast arms down and put up these portable traffic signal trailers until we get the full new traffic signal in place. Because you're looking at a lead time of eight to ten to twelve months just to get equipment once we give the contractor go. So those are still going to be out there for quite a while if we didn't did this, didn't do this. So the alternates we did were, hey, let's have the contractor purchase these trailers, and we keep them at the end of the project for future knockdowns. We've had several intersections in the past six, eight months where a traffic signal pole gets hit, and now we could potentially be in a bind of, we have to go rent a trailer in then, in the interim. The second alter, alternate two, was contractor rent those to us for the duration of the project. And alternate three was rent two by two. And at the end of the day, to purchase four was not that significantly different than having rent or purchase or part of that. And so we felt like the best way to go was, let's go ahead and have four of these trailers. And just to give you an idea, this is an example of the trailer that we specked out. So basically, you can roll that out there, lift up that arm, and basically, it looks like a regular traffic signal. And these are, the one that we have specked out is AC-powered, so you can just tie that into the existing wiring at an intersection and have it up and operational fairly, fairly quickly. So with that, it is recommended that city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a capital improvement project, construction contract with Strapping Technology LP for the traffic signal installation in various locations, which is a new traffic signal of Grande Boulevard and Old Noonday Road, and reconstruction of the traffic signal of West Gentry Parkway and West Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard project for one million fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty cents. That's for bid number twenty-three oh twenty-three.
Any questions for Cameron?
Cameron, is this still expected to go to half cent next month? So we're looking at an August twenty twenty-four operational status?
So we approved it yesterday at half cent, sales tax. And so we will start routing the contracts for signature, so hopefully, you know, it takes a couple of weeks sometimes to get that done. With the, in the, the contract document that we put together, we said, once we give the contractor notice to proceed, we want them to deploy those portable traffic signals within thirty days. And so that's the intent and goal of this project.
Okay, thank you.
So when did you say the install date is for the one on Grande and Old Noonday?
So again, you're looking at anywhere from eight to ten months to just get equipment. So it could be, you know, a year from now before we have that up and operational. So it does take some time.
The big piece, you might want to tell them a little bit about just the mast arms and the other way, Tom, on those.
Yeah, so really, the two big lead items are, one, your mast arm traffic signal, the steel. Those are standard, but it just takes six, eight months, once they order those from the manufacturer, to get those in place. And also, traffic signal cabinets that we order are about a six to eight month lead time on those as well.
Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Haney, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Cameron. Larry. Morning.
My name is Larry Everett. I'm nine hundred West Gentry Parkway, and I am the community development arm of Neighborhood Services Department. And what I'm here today is discuss our upcoming budget for, for Neighborhood Services in terms of what we have with our contact with HUD. And we have to do an annual plan, and we have to coordinate the budget with an annual plan. And we've completed the annual plan, and now, we're here now to talk to you all about approving our budget. And initially, I just want to talk about what we've accomplished so far in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three. Just going without going through all of them, just two major things that we've done. Basically, we worked with our Parks and Recreation Department for the renovation improvements of two public parks, PT Cove and Nobley Young Park. We provided the funding for those, for development of those parks, and we're proud to say that our teamwork with them at the parks turned out very well. And secondly, we've completed the five remaining newly constructed homes that we have in Hidden Palace. We've got that solidified based on some issues that we had to go through, but we've gotten completed now, and we're ready to sell those homes and get those back on the market for the low-to-modern income citizens. We are developing goals for this upcoming year, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, which our fiscal year starts October one. And some of the things that we're looking at is, in those six projects, we're looking at basically selling those five completed homes that we have. We have, have a waiting list of clients that are ready to purchase those homes. And number two, we're going to start phase two of Hidden Palace. We're going to construct four new single-family homes for that same purpose, to be able to develop that neighborhood and get those, those new homes in that, those areas sold and spruce up that neighborhood. Project three, we're looking at assisting improvement with another public park. We will work with Parks and Recreation Department and identify a park that we can use the funding to go back in and do some improvements in. Project four, we're going to partner with local agencies to provide shelter and housing for the homeless population. This is through the Homearc funding that, which is a separate fund that we got allocated from HUD. So we're, we're proud to look at that in terms of what we're going to do in that area. And the project five, we're going to assist ten families with the down paving assistance in single-family homes. And project six, we're going to look at demolishing at least ten substandard homes in the low-to-modern income areas.
Larry, before you proceed, can you go back to that last slide?
Okay.
Project four?
Yeah.
I know that we'd been talking with one agency about emergency homeless shelter. So the funding that could be there, is that one time that comes? Is it something that has accumulated over time? Is there anything of substance in that fund to help build a shelter?
Yeah, it's, right now, it's a one-time fund. We, we had to submit a grant to see if we could get those funds, and we did succeed with HUD to prove that from a standpoint. And now we have a phase where we have to partner with some agency that you just talked about, and then, once we get that going, and once we get approval to do that, and then we can use that, that, those funds to build some shelter, shelter home. And then, once HUD looks at that, and if that's something that's very feasible, they can fund us again to continue that at this point. But right now, we're just kind of in the, in the infancy phase in terms of trying to get something established, so we can know where we're going at this point.
Okay, thanks.
Our allocation from HUD, we received a letter early this year, and for those two grants that we operate, the CDVG Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program, we had seven hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred and forty dollars for CDVG and three hundred and eighty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars for home. And as you know, with HUD, we, twenty percent of the CDVG funds come out for admin, and only ten percent come out from home, and we have to use those from that area. So that gives us a total of one million one hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. And as you see there, and I'm not going to go into specific detail, this is a chart that breaks down how we, we will use the funds and how we will administer throughout this upcoming year. And keep in mind that our process has to coincide with our consolidated plan, which is the five-year consolidated plan that was developed during that time. That actually is going to end this year, and we would have to start developing a new five-year consolidated plan. And we can come up with different projects and different issues from that standpoint. So, but this is still tied into the current consolidated plan. So that's why, why we have to break down for some of these certain categories at this point. Any questions? And one other requirement that we have to do is, we have to seek public hearing from, from our clients, from our, our citizens, in terms of what they expect and what they would like to see. And we did conduct some public hearings, one on June twenty-ninth and the last one on July sixth. And we, and to date, we have not received any comments, but we will continue in terms of accepting comments if they come in prior to our submission through HUD, that we have to have it in by August fifteenth. Staff recommends that city council approval of the budget expenditure is for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four fiscal year and our funded allocation.
Any questions for Larry?
A question, a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Everett, first, for this report, because you've answered every question that two of my constituents called about on Sunday.
Oh, that's great.
So the question I have on the homeless, is that going to be, what type of homes would that be? And will that be ownership or would that be voucher?
Well, it can be a combination for that. Basically, what we're, what we're doing is, we're looking at maybe some, some smaller homes that they can get into. And if we deal with the agency, like, for instance, like, we talked with Camp V, and that's the veterans' shelter, and basically, they're looking at shelters, small shelters in terms of those, those veterans that come in and they need a place to stay from their standpoint. We will look at doing some homes on their property, and they will actually coordinate, coordinate that process. And we will just provide the funding for the shelter for them to stay in from the standpoint. But the shelter that, at that time, using the Camp V example, it will not be for the individual, but it'd be a transition that they can come in, and once they correct it, they'll move on, then they bring someone else into that. So that's kind of the gist of how that structure will work for the, I said, ninety percent of that. And then we can, if we partner with, say, say, PACT or someone like that from their standpoint, they can look at possibility of purchasing some homes from that, from their standpoint, in terms of what they administer in their particular program.
Okay, great.
So it's really developed on partnership and then how we actually shape the, the process.
Thank you. I know those homes are tiny homes that are on the Camp V.
From the tiny home structure that we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Larry?
Larry, can you walk us through the process on demolition of homes? I know I contacted you about two substandard, longtime vacant homes in my district, and just can, the process of how long it takes to, for a home to be demolished?
Okay, yeah, when we, first, we, we work with our code enforcement department in terms of they're the ones that go out and tag the properties from the standpoint. And then those in our, in our jurisdiction and where we operate, we'll go out and, once we get the notice that they've tagged, they'll send us the documentation in. We'll go out and look at those properties, and we try to identify who the owner is from that standpoint. And once we identify the owner, we want to make sure there's no other ownership within that property. We have to do a title search and things of the nature to make sure there's no one that's tied to that. And once we realize that that needs to be addressed, we'll bring it to the Neighborhood Revitalization Board, and they will make, here's what we have to say, we'll make, make our spiel in terms of what needs to be done. And if they give us, to go forward with that process of either improvement or demolition, then we go into those phases in terms of going forward. We have to do CHPO in terms of state, state historical preservation, make sure there's no historical significance on this property. And then we have to do environmental review to make sure it's not in a flood zone from this standpoint. And then the third measure is, we'll have to send out letters to all areas of the properties and make sure they are aware of what we're trying to do. And if that owner does not correspond with all these processes, then we will go into the demolition phase. And then we have our contractors, and we'll go out and get estimates in terms of how to demolish those properties. If it's not a property that's not need to be demolished, and then we will also go into civil penalties on those owners and address that issue in terms of provide civil penalties until they make those corrections. And then hopefully, based on all these steps, that we can get some of the clients to cooperate and move forward with it. Of course, we don't have some that will not cooperate, but we try to take some more extensive measures to force the issue, not only clean up, but also mitigate renovation of those properties.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Larry?
So moved. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I took it back.
If it goes, if it goes smooth with that, that process, what's a timeframe? Nine months, a year? If you receive no resistance in the process of seeking demolition of the property?
Right. We, we have to follow the, the context of the Neighborhood Revitalization Board. They, they give, they'll give us thirty, sixty, or ninety days. And once they give, we, we have to allow that for them to make that correction. And most of the time, it's about ninety days. And once we do that, I would say, go through the process, and usually can take about six months, and we can get, before we get through all the processes and get all the detailed information we need to make sure that nothing comes back against the city, that we've done our due diligence to cover all the, the legal processes in, in those steps.
Thank you.
All right, we got a motion by McKeller.
Second.
Second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
All right, we're down to the consent agenda.
Motion's written. Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You're kind of locked up there.
He sure is, baby.
Got a little emotional.
Yeah.
The price of those lawnmowers.
City managers report. Don't lock up.
I'm not locking up. So, mayor and council, before I begin report, I do want to talk about oh four, which was the right-of-way use and construction ordinance. I do want to make sure that we didn't mislead you, and a question was asked in relationship to, can the pedestals, can people request the pedestals instead of the flat concrete base? And we, I think we answered it as an affirmative. The ordinance is not actually allowed for that kind of, for you to then order or kind of request which, which format you want in front of your house. For consistency's sake, per the ordinance, we're requiring just the flat concrete pad from here on out throughout the city. So I do want to give you all the option, if there was any amendments you want to make or any affirmative changes that an ordinance...
I think it said they had to get approval.
Say it again, sir.
I think the vendor had to get approval from the city to change it.
Yes. If the, if for whatever reason, the vendor cannot put it in below ground, they do have to come to us and show why it's such, and then thus, the engineering department does need to give a... need to give approval for that. So if y'all are okay with that, then I'll move on to talk about all the good things.
Everybody good?
The flush mount, it's not just concrete. Their fiberglass are also, aren't they, or they're concrete, the flush mount?
And they look concrete, but I look at pictures. I don't, I'm not in the construction business. But they could be verified. Darren, do we know whether it's
We've seen it concrete.
Okay. I can look at pictures.
All right, let's move on.
Yeah, so all the good stuff. I want to thank y'all for the work on the on the air show that was held out at Tyler Pounds Field back on June thirtieth. That was an incredible night and quite a bit of work went into that. Camp V, of course, does just incredible work in getting that put together for our community. Of course, Stephen Thompson with our airport, our airport manager out there does incredible work. Parks and Streets jumped in to help with some different work, Legal and Risk. Y'all know the amount of work that Legal and Risk do behind the scenes on all the contracts, all the agreements, getting this to where it is something that is enjoyable for the community, but you are protected. And that is incredible amount of just time, sweat, and energy that they put into that. And of course, police and fire, and there were Councilman Nichols, thank you for your work on that one, and your predecessor, Bob Westbrook. I thought, you know, a lot of council members, once they get off there, they disappear for a while, they go back to make recover, make some money since because of all the time that they lost while from their jobs while in council. Bob Westbrook has said, you know what, I'm just going to keep going. He's a little energizer bunny.
He'll keep going on the air show, too.
So he did incredible work on that. So thank y'all for that. A couple of days later, we had our annual Fourth of July celebration at Lindsay Park, and it was heavily attended events once again. We had a variety of vendors and food trucks present, along with a fun outdoor game area, DJ Moore. A special thank you to the park staff who helped work and put on the event, and also a thanks to our police department, fire, and Solid Waste for making the event so successful. And then also a special thank you as well to also to extend to our transit department. They moved more than five hundred and ninety riders to be able to go to be able to attend that by providing free shuttle service for citizens. And so without them, many probably people wouldn't have been able to attend the event since we still hit our capacity for parking. And so we thank for Transit for kind of putting in their efforts and helping make memories for our community. And then it is summer. We have Little League, the Little League State Tournament is coming up, and we received a special thank you I wanted to share with you all from the Rose City West Little League about as far as the work that's being done out there with Roy Lockhart and his crews. Les Campbell wrote us, "The fields are in better shape than they have been in years thanks to the efforts of Roy and his team. The edges look great. The worn area's been replaced with sod, DG or turf, and look really good. Roy sent me the results of a light and scoreboard audit. He performed over the weekend and had to report all scoreboards worked, and over eighty-five percent of bulbs are operable and all fields being utilized." I want to give a shout out to Roy and his team because we all know that it's been hotter than heck around here. These guys knocked it out of the park, Les Campbell. And so we're very good, glad about our partnership that we have with our our leagues and the work that they do, and also very grateful for Roy Lockhart, his parks team that are out there, and just all the different park staff that are making sure that our community is able to enjoy this summer.
All right, any questions for the Go ahead.
I I think we're all aware of what excellent staff our city manager has assembled here. But I did learn this morning of a special award that our city clerk won, which was City Clerk of the Year for the northeast Texas area. Miss City Clerk?
Northeast Texas chapter.
Northeast Texas chapter. She didn't want me to say anything, but I didn't think that was right. That's all right.
All right, James.
Go ahead. Charter.
Mr. City Manager, I also wanted to make mention of the POW that was there on the night before, June the thirtieth.
Oh, yes.
He served, well, he spent eight years as a POW in Vietnam and then came back and continued his career up to thirty years. And he was our special guest during the reception. So I wanted to make mention of him. He's right down the street from Van Zant County.
Oh, okay. Thank you for sharing that.
Yes.
For those who don't know, Mr. Mayor, happy birthday yesterday.
Yeah.
Thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, happy birthday to you.
Nope, we're done.
So moved.
All right, we're adjourned.